You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening and welcome to the November 12th, 2024 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance, and I say good evening to our viewers on Cable Two. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, it is our privilege to say thank you to all of America's veterans, to let them know that we appreciate them for their service and honor them for their sacrifices. The price of freedom is high. We cannot afford to forget those that were willing to pay it. So, we celebrate America's veterans for keeping this nation, the land of the free and the home of the brave. Now, we will have a moment of silence in remembrance of two students that have passed away recently. One was a Lawrence Middle School student, and then the second was Kernersville Middle Student. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our first order of business tonight is the Agenda Review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next is our student performance. Please welcome Malcolm Turner from Clemmons Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Malcolm Turner is an eighth-grade trumpet player from Clemmons Middle School. Prior to sixth grade, he began his trumpet studies with Carl Kastner of the Winston-Salem Symphony and shared a video with his band director, Mr. Forsh, where Malcolm, as not even a sixth grader, already was prepared to improvise over a 12-bar blues track. At that time, Mr. Forsh immediately recognized Malcolm's talent. During the sixth and seventh grade year, Malcolm has already auditioned and performed with our All-County Honors Band, the Northwest All-District Honors Band, the North Carolina All-State Honors Band, the Western Region Middle School Jazz Band, and the North Carolina All-State Middle School Jazz Band. With all of his accomplishments, Malcolm has a real passion for jazz. Tonight's jazz performance selection will be "Just Friends" by John Clener. Please give a warm round of applause for Mr. Malcolm Turner.
And if Malcolm's family is in the audience, please stand so you can be recognized. Next, our special recognitions. Heather Swift-Rapp, our Director of Psychological Services, will present the School Psychology Awareness Week proclamation.
Good evening, Board Members and Superintendent McManus. Sorry, I can't compete with that, so. I just got a little statement for you all. Very talented young man. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and to acknowledge our school psychologists this evening. Every year, our National Association of School Psychologists recognizes a week in November as School Psychology Awareness Week, and it just so happens to be this week. Since joining Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, I've had the opportunity to work with a great group of individuals who are dedicated to helping the children and families in our district. While the primary task of these individuals is to administer assessments, they often go above and beyond to make sure our students receive the attention and the care that they need. Not only do they collaborate with other Student Services team members and meet the needs of students, but they also provide resources for our parents in times of need. With that being said, I would like to recognize our great school psychologists in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools in honor of the current School Psych Awareness Week and ask that you recognize and sign the proclamation. Thank you.
Are there any in the audience, any social workers? Okay, thank you. Next, Lieutenant Colonel John Brown will recognize Cadet Jack Harrison from West Forsyth High School for the JROTC Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Outstanding Achievement.
Madam Chair, School Board, Ms. McManus, ladies and gentlemen, it is truly an honor to be here tonight to recognize such an outstanding JROTC cadet. I've known him, he's a senior this year. He's done some outstanding things for JROTC and recognitions within the community itself. He has been to two competitions in Washington, DC, both on the academic piece and the leadership piece, that only about 40 to 20 to 40 schools, depending on which category you're in, go each year. And he's been a part of all of that with West Forsyth. He's a senior this year. He has already been accepted into the Merchant Marine. He has also got applications into both the Air Force Academy and the Naval Academy, and I think he's wanted to go Navy if I'm not mistaken. So, I'll tell you what, an outstanding cadet. He is being recognized today for the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross, a very distinguished award that only one out of 4,000 cadets in a brigade get. So, there's not many that get this award. I have no doubt that he will do great things for our country.
And it says, Legion of Valor of the United States of America, for all shells, C-13s, prevent breeding, just certified, and Jack Harrison has been awarded the Legion of Valor Bronze Cross for Outstanding Achievement in Reserve Officer Training Core Program. Signed, Richard D. Wanky, Lieutenant Colonel Retired, who was the Director of the Wolves. And before I go down, I also want to recognize Major Sugg. He's done an outstanding job at West Forsyth, and I think he would have tested that.
Next, Tina Loveton, the Executive Director of Professional Learning, will recognize America, Amerike, Amerike, Amoriki Summers from Paisley Middle School for winning the Governor's Educator Discovery Award.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. I am here this evening to recognize Amoriki Summers, who is the Media Coordinator at Lawrence and Paisley. She has been recognized by the North Carolina Business Committee for Education, and they award grants for the Governor's Education Discovery Award. Select applicants are chosen to be able to attend professional development. She is awarded up to $1,000 stipend to be able to continue to participate in professional development. As we know, in education, it takes a lot of time and effort to stay on top of research, and we value Amoriki's passion for learning and going and applying for this grant and award. So, thank you and congratulations to Amoriki Summers.
Next, Dr. Tamisha Barnes-Jones, who is the Chief of Schools, will recognize the Restart Achievement at Cook Literacy Model School.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Members of the Board, and Superintendent McManus. I am thrilled to be here tonight to celebrate this amazing school. In the 2017-2018 school year, Cook Literacy Model School began its journey as a restart school with an initial achievement score of 15.3. This year, the school's achievement score was 46.9. This remarkable growth has earned Cook Literacy Model School a prestigious award for achieving the highest net change in achievement among all restart schools in the state of North Carolina. So, tonight, we want to recognize the outstanding work that is happening at Cook Elementary School under the leadership of Selena Tribby, who is here tonight with members of her staff and some of her students. And here with me tonight is Latasha Barknight, our District Director of School Transformation and Restart Support, who's going to be presenting their certificates. She's being awarded three certificates. Selena Tribby, you're getting three certificates. So, thank you for your amazing leadership and all you do to ensure that students and staff are thriving at Cook Literacy Model School. Congratulations.
Hi, how are you? Good to see you.
Chris Weigert, our Chief HR Officer, will recognize schools and principals who have achieved the top 50% in growth in North Carolina for the 2023-2024 school year.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Board Members, Superintendent McManus. We're excited today. We get to recognize 26 of our principals who are recognized by the state through state-funded principal bonuses. These bonuses started in 2016. It recognizes principals who have schools that finish in the top 50% for student growth as measured by EVOs. The categories are top 5%, 10, 15, 20, and top 50%. And we're ecstatic that we have this many principals to recognize. So, with that being said, I'm going to ask that Chief of Schools, TBJ, would hand out the certificates, and I want to recognize Ms. Jill Hall-Freeman to announce the principals.
Good evening. I have the pleasure and honor of introducing our principals from the west area. First, in top 50%, Cheryl Frazier from Bolton Elementary School. From Clemmons Elementary School, Wendy Bruington. From Diggs Latham Elementary School, Cassandra Dobson. They're excited about their work. From Lewisville Elementary School, Anna Balzer. From Morgan Elementary School, Lisa Davis. And top 20% from Jefferson Elementary School, Katie McGregor. Top 15% Meadowlark Elementary School. Representing Meadowlark is Katie Prusko, and the principal is Neil Raymer, who couldn't be with us tonight. And top 5% in the state is Reagan High School. Representing Reagan is Brent Adkinson, and the principal, Brad Royal. Did I say, I am so sorry. I skipped Louisville, Louisville Middle because I saw Louisville. But I will not forget Luana. I'm so proud of her. It was her first year. Luana Wade, Louisville Middle School. She'll get me tomorrow. Congratulations to the west-area principals. I'm so proud of them.
Thank you. This is an exciting night, isn't it? Keep it up. And so, recognizing the south-area principals, we have Ms. Felicia Davis.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Superintendent McManus and Board. I am absolutely ecstatic and excited to present the principals in the south area who have achieved 50% or higher growth for the state. Starting off with Brunson Elementary, Dr. Anisia Scales. Principal Walter Johnson. Now, listen, Walter's listed for Forbush, but we expect that he will be here next year for Parkland as well. Griffin Elementary, Tiffany Kraft. Con Oak Elementary, Trent Watkins. Moore Magnet, Dr. Justin Markell. Sherwood Forest, Principal Jacob Louther could not be here, but Catherine Church should be here representing. Whittaker Elementary, Brian Brookshire. And then the top 20%, Cook Elementary, Selena Tribby. This is exciting. And recognizing our north-area principals, we have Dr. Yakisha Clemmons.
So, good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to stand before you to celebrate all of our principals, but specifically our north-area principals who have placed in the top 50%. Starting with Old Richmond Elementary School, Terrence Super, Principal Terrence Super, who is in the top 50%. In the top 20%, we have Mineral Springs Elementary School. Principal Marquita Johnson could not be here tonight, but also representing the school is Assistant Principal, Dr. Cheryl Bowling. We are so very proud of the north principals and all of their hard work and achievements. So, congratulations.
Good evening again. It's my pleasure to stand in place of Kevin Spanhauer, our east-area superintendent, to recognize our east-area principals. First is Cash Elementary, Jennifer Swoford, who was unable to be with us today, but Cash Elementary finished in the top 50%. Kernersville Elementary, Principal Teresa Rose, top 50%. Pine Grove Elementary, Principal Brendan Alkins. Sedge Garden Elementary School, Principal Angela Reeves. Smith Farm Elementary School, Principal Zachary Baker, top 50%. Walkertown Elementary School, Principal Diana McIntosh, top 15%. Atkins High School, in the top 5%, Principal Chris Nichols. Before they go, I think we'd be remiss. This is the principal bonus award, and to receive this, you have to be at the school, you have to be six months or more at the school last year and still employed with this in the same principal role this district. We actually had two more schools in the east area who qualify for the bonus, but one of their principals retired, and that would be Kernersville Middle School under the leadership of Lisa Duggins. And we also had one more school from the west. And we also had one more school from the West. And Kernersville finished in the top 10% of the state. And then West Forsyth High School, Kevin Spanhauer, who I'm representing, was the principal there, and they were in the top 20%. So we actually had 28 schools finishing the top 50% of the state. Thank y'all.
What a wonderful celebration. At this time, we are going to hear our public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit near the aisle seats closest to the podium. We expect civility. Please be kind, considerate, and respectful. Director comments only to me as board chair and not to anyone in the audience. And now we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, and there is a follow-up process to address your concerns. You have three minutes to speak, and first, our speaker, first speaker is Jeffrey Saunders.
Okay, let's go. Good evening, Madam Chairman, good evening, Madam Superintendent, good evening, Board, and good evening for everybody who's in earshot of my voice. I'm Jeff Saunders. I'm a high school science teacher at the wonderful Main Street Academy. I've been here since 2018. I love it there, and I love working in this district. Now, our school is a vital part of our community, offering a safe and supportive environment for students who need additional care, structure, and encouragement for them to drive. Now, we serve many Tier Two and Tier Three students, and those who refer to our schools with significant needs. Now, despite our essential work, Main Street Academy was not informed with the Transformation Benefit, let's put it that way, this year, which is both disheartening and puzzling to our dedicated team. Now, learning about this Transformation Benefit allocations through social media, I ended up researching further, which found, which brings me here today to advocate for Main Street Academy. Now, our staff provides intensive, high-quality support to help students overcome academic, social, emotional challenges, work that is crucial, demanding, and transformative. Now, many students come to us after struggling elsewhere, and we serve as their function for their success. Now, this benefit now will be not acknowledge our efforts, but also to bolster our ability to meet the needs of those students effectively. Now, I am certain about specific criteria in this benefit selection process. And any clarity on why Main Street Academy was excluded would be greatly appreciated. Now, this insight would guide us, and guide us in aligning more closely with the district's priorities. Now, we fully support the intent of the Transformation Benefit to recognize schools addressing significant education challenges. And we also celebrate the achievement of our fellow schools. Now, however, Main Street Academy does play a unique role with our work, and has a profound impact on the Tier Two and Tier Three students who rely on us. So now, our request is simple. If you can, think about it. For this eligibility benefit, this funding would also strengthen our capacity to serve those students, validate our staff, unwavering commitment, and affirm our school's vital contribution to district mission and equitable education. Now, thank you for considering this request. For any clarity you can offer, and with your support, we can continue transforming lives at the Main Street Academy, because it's a good day to be at MSA. That's my time.
Thank you. Jenny Easter.
Good evening. As President of FCAE, I am here to address the recommended retention bonus for the Transformation School Bonus and the $500,000 for Classified Staff raises from our county commissioners. FCAE recognizes that our educators who work in Tier Two and Three schools have an extremely difficult job meeting some of our most important needs while simultaneously working to raise test scores enough to get them off of the underperforming state schools list. While we agree these educators absolutely deserve a retention bonus, it does confuse me that the recommendation is to take it from our state's low-wellth retention supplement that is typically split amongst evenly with our classified teachers, or our certified teachers. My hope is that this vote tonight is tabled, and more analysis is done to keep this needed bonus, but from a different pot of money. Regarding the Classified Compensation Plan, while we know the county commissioners have only approved $500,000 in the 2024-25 school district budget, we also know that the market study showed that it will take $2.4 million to get all of our classified staff up to market average. As I understand, the recommendation tonight will not go far with the $500,000. So I hope that when you're sectioning off a certain sector of our classified staff, you keep in mind that we have to keep fighting for the rest of our classified staff. And also that you will go to the next county commissioners' meeting to pressure for more than $500,000 to be released for raises, because we know full well that at least another half million was sitting in the bank for us last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee Childress.
Good evening. First, I want to thank Mr. Krantz again for completing the Classified Compensation Scale. I know it was hard work, and I want to thank you guys for, in advance, for approving it. Our classified folks are the hardest-working people and often the lowest-paid people, and they need every dollar that they can get, and any increase will be celebrated. Now, on to the Transformation Bonuses. It's been a very tough day. I do not work at a Tier Two or Tier Three school, and I have been reminded that this is not for them today, unfortunately. But I'll, I'll speak what I'm going to say here. I am in favor of a Transformation Bonus. I know that the folks in Tier Two and Tier Three schools work really hard. However, what I'm not in favor of is the funding source of this Transformation Bonus. The monies being used are the state supplement, and they received the last couple of years from all of our certified employees. To be able to move forward with this, our certified employees not in Tiers Two or Three will actually see a decrease in their checks come the spring. We all work extremely hard, and while I understand the need to incentivize, you don't rob Peter to pay Paul to do this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Daniel.
Good evening Chair Kaplan, Superintendent McManus, members of the Board. I too would like to address the Retention Bonus. Our teachers receive supplements from the county in addition to their state-budgeted pay, ranging in year 15, a low of 14% to year 40, a high of 20%. Meanwhile, our principals receive at the elementary level 25% supplement in addition to their state-funded salary. Middle school principals, 30%, and high school principals, 52.5%. Yet, in the Transformation Bonus, in addition to the annual principal bonus, there is a Tier Two and Tier Three principal bonus, such that a Tier Three principal could get an additional $2,500 bonus. While our teachers in Tier One are being, as Mr. Childress said, robbed of funds that were intended for them by the state, while everyone in our district deserves, almost everyone in our district deserves more money, our teachers serve anywhere from 15 to 35 students at a time, doing an outstanding job of trying to maintain class management while teaching, while being nurse, while being emotional counselor. I urge you to reconsider the way you are divvying up the money that's allocated when you consider the amount of the pay of our teachers versus the others who are being considered for bonuses, and also to consider the source. I would like to second the first gentleman's concern that of all of the people who work the very hardest, those in our special schools who are excluded probably work the hardest. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Sonnenlee.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. I'm not a finance person, so I'll defer to FCAE folks for what they are asking for. But I also wanted to remind everyone that we have some changes in our world that went on last week, and that there are, you know, we're going to have new state superintendent, new governor, and other folks in the state legislature, as well as new folks locally, and to really work with new people as they come in. It's a great time to build relationships when people are first coming into these offices, because I think what we've heard from everybody tonight is like, we need more money, right? We want to pay our staff. I know one of the goals of the district is to make sure that it's a great place to work. And if we have really great, dedicated staff and teachers, we know our kids will learn, and we'll have more people up here next year getting awards for having growth schools. So I know we have what we have right now, but there's ways to grow that pie. And I think we have the people that are coming into office. It's a good time to build relationships. So just wanted to reinforce that y'all have a lot of work to do, like in this room, but also with other elected officials like yourselves. Thank you.
Sam Kerrigan.
Hello. My name is Sam Kerrigan. I'm a middle school teacher at Clemens Middle. I didn't really have much prepared for this. I wasn't sure I'd be coming out to this meeting until just before it began. But I just wanted to voice the opinions of myself and some of the people on my team at my school. The message we got this morning, an email about the compensation package, about the bonuses, things that all of us have been talking about. One thing that stood out to me was that the purpose of it was to incentivize teachers to stay in the profession, to join the profession, and to boost morale as we move into the holiday season. Now, I'm not coming up here to complain, or to chastise, or to try and say anything in particular about that's a good or a bad choice. I'll just say that if the purpose was to inspire more confidence and to, in, try and build more trust, that it has missed the mark on that count. I can't think of a time that my team was less energized coming into a new week than upon seeing that message. We were incredibly disappointed to see that money would be taken out from our bonuses this year to pay others, and it made us feel very undervalued. I'm not sure that I necessarily know all the ins and outs of the situation. I'm not someone who's following all the details like my friends in FCAE or any of the other people, but I just wanted to express some of the opinions from the teachers on the ground, that this was very disappointing news to hear, and one that I personally hope will be reconsidered. I am only a second-year teacher, but I can say that at least looking around my school, there aren't a lot of teachers with medium amount of experience. With the way that our, our profession's been valued, I can see a lot of first, second, third-year teachers, and I can see a lot of teachers with 27, 28, 29 years who are just counting out the time left. But for those of us who just began in this profession, we're already seeing what sort of value is being placed on us, and it makes us reconsider whether this is a place that we want to spend the rest of our careers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our discussion items. We have four tonight. First, Dr. Tamisha Barnes-Jones, Chief of Schools, will discuss the School Improvement Plan.
Good evening, again. Before you, just a short time, I'm here tonight to present our 24-25 School Improvement Plans. Just as a reminder, there is a general statute that says all schools must have a school improvement plan, and that they must be approved by our local board. So we're bringing the plans to you tonight, and then we'll come back at the next board meeting for your approval. Of course, you know, the school improvement process is iterative, it is data-driven, but most importantly, it's driven by a school team made of internal and external stakeholders, including parents. Yeah, including parents. And so the school improvement process started last April with our schools going through the facilitated assessment of the multi-tiered system of support, the FAMAS. It was completed by June 30th, where schools determined three to five SMART goals aligned to our district's vision and mission and their school priorities. They then identified research-based indicators in our NC STAR aligned to their school goals, and then began to develop action steps to meet those goals. Our schools receive ongoing support from our school improvement directors. They also receive feedback from area superintendents. The plans are monitored monthly in their school improvement plan meetings. So as you're reading the plans, you will see that there are some themes that have emerged. Mostly, our schools are focused on the same areas that we're focused on as a district, academics, behavior, and culture, and including attendance. But there's also some common strategies that you'll see across many of our schools. They are leveraging our advanced teacher roles, multi-classroom leaders, where they are expanding the reach of highly effective teachers that are coaching other teachers in the building. You'll see that they are leveraging data-informed instructional practices, including weekly data meetings, where they are looking at student work analysis and quickly closing student misconceptions. You'll also see in the plans a focus on building the capacity of teachers and instructional leadership team through ongoing observation and feedback, and also leveraging our SEL curriculum and restorative practices. That's just a few themes that emerged as far as strategies. Of course, if you have any questions between now and the next school board meeting, you can reach out, but do you have any questions for me tonight?
Any questions? Okay, thank you. I'd like to make an announcement for the owner of the car of a Nissan Maxima, license plate is JLN7621. If the owner of this car could come to the lobby? Can everyone? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Dr. Tamisha Barnes-Jones, if you can also give us an update on the Equity Centered Pipeline Initiative.
And I'm back.
And you're back.
So excited to give you a little bit of an update on our Equity Centered Pipeline Initiative in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. We've coined that. It's LEAP, Leader Equity Advancement Pipeline. As you know, second only to teachers, our leaders are, have the most impact on student achievement. And so it is our focus to develop equity-driven leaders who are uniquely positioned to ensure equitable outcomes for our students. So just a little bit of a background, Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is one of eight large districts in, in the nation that received an $8.2 million grant from the Wallace Foundation to help support creating effective systems for recruiting, selecting, developing, retaining, and supporting high-quality, equity-driven school leaders. The work is led by our district partnership team. The work is led by our district partnership team that includes external and internal stakeholders, district leaders, principals, assistant principals. We have a partnership with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, local colleges, including UNC Greensboro and Appalachian State. We are in year four, but I'm very proud of the work we've done over the past few years. We have developed our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Equity Driven Leadership Framework. In fact, we're in the second iteration of that. And we've grown it to go across our leadership continuum from teacher leader to assistant principal to principal, all the way up to principal supervisor. So super excited by that. We have a very, very strong induction program that's being led by Dr. Alicia Bailey, who is a homegrown transformational leader here in Winston-Salem. She's walking poolside with our new APs and our new principals, so a very, very strong program there. We have strengthened our talent acquisition process over the years. And as a matter of fact, we're working this year to better codify that process so it's even more transparent and so that we have sustainability beyond the Wallace Grant. We have developed, we're in the development stage of our Leader Equity Advancement Dashboard, our Leader Tracking Dashboard. It is being built internally and in partnership with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. We look to have that launched for our upcoming hiring season, which will help us better match our principals with the needs of the schools. You know, one of our goals, of course, was to ensure that our leadership pipeline reflected our student demographics. And we've done a really good job over the last few years working on that. We do still have a ways to go, particularly with our Hispanic and Latinx community. So we have some comprehensive efforts this year to shore up and try to meet that goal. So moving ahead, I wanted to just shout out the launch of Progresa. November fifth, we had over seventy of our Hispanic and Latinx workforce come to the Career Center. This new initiative is a new affinity group specifically for our Hispanic and Latinx. It's being led by two of our rock star leaders, Janet Matero, a former Teacher of the Year, who is now the Assistant Principal at Mount Taber, and Nancy Martinez, our former Principal of the Year and the Principal of Career Center. It was such a beautiful meeting to see the community in there. And it's really exciting that they'll be able to be celebrated and to advocate, but also provide us with feedback on what type of professional development we need to provide that's completely tailored to their individual needs. We are also partnering with the national organization Men of Color Educational Leadership. And so we're launching our own chapter here in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Again, meeting the diverse needs of our leaders of color. We are sending a cohort again to the convention in Florida. And there's a special day just for our Hispanic and Latinx leaders. And so I'm very excited by that partnership. And then in February, we will be launching our inaugural Principal for a Day that is going to be led by Dr. Jill Hall-Freeman. She brought a very wonderful idea to the district partnership team. And it is an effort for us to reach out to the community and local businesses, to step into the shoes of a principal and learn about the wonderful things that's happening in our schools. It also works as a sustainability effort so that we can sustain this work beyond the Wallace Grant. So I'm very excited. But I also want to just let you know that coming up this Saturday is our very first, what we're calling Leap Day. It's Aspiring Teacher, Expiring Educator, Aspiring Leaders Day. It will be held at East Forsyth High School from eight to three. It's being coordinated by our Executive Director of Professional Learning, Dr. Tina Lupton. Very excited. We have over twenty universities that will be on site providing information about scholarships and resources that they provide. We will have different panels. We will have resume review, mock interviews. And then we're also leveraging our teacher cadet, folks who will be able to support childcare so that folks in the community who are bringing their children can come and also have their meets met. So if you are available this Saturday to stop by, East Forsyth High School, please come by and join us. And that is our update. Do you have any questions for me?
Board Member Watts.
Not a question, but a commendation. Continue to do the work that you're doing in all these areas. It's much needed and much desired, and we were looking for this for a long time. So thank you for being the spokesperson, the quote leader. I know there are many great people on your team, but thank you for taking on this project for us in the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks so much. Yes, Board Member Barr.
You know, Dr. Barnes-Jones, thank you again for leading this. Could you just kind of give us an example of how do you identify, how do you process this or identify or develop the pipeline? For example, how do you identify the minorities and then how do those steps practically look?
Oh, wow. So that's a very robust question. So we have a very, right now, we have a very strong process that starts with making sure that we have our interview questions that are aligned to our Equity Driven Leadership Framework. We have the part of the process where, before they even get to the interview process, they have to do pre-assessments to make sure that they are up to the skill sets that we're looking for. When you're talking about our minorities, what we realize is that many of our men of color were pigeonholed into positions that did not give them an opportunity to build their instructional leadership. That was a gap that we had in our district. And so what we've done is we're trying to strip away having two pathways of assistant principals and providing instructional professional development for all of our APs so that when they show up to these interviews, they can demonstrate strong understanding and strong knowledge of instructional leadership. And so I believe that that has helped us shore up and ensure that we are providing an equitable opportunity for everyone to get into the pipeline.
Yes, Vice Chair Bohannon.
Just a question or two. So based on Board Member Barr's question, so how does, because I, that was, that's not the first time I've heard this sort of kind of pigeonholing, that sort of process where people are kind of steered towards focusing more on discipline so they can't develop the instructional knowledge. So how does that relate to like the sort of advent of the API position, right, within our district? Because I know at one point, we didn't have APIs. Now we do have APIs. And so how are we, like, if I aspire to be an administrator, are all APs, no matter what, focusing at some point on instruction, even if they're not an API?
So that is the work that we're doing now. I don't know the entire history of, the API role was here in the district when I got here, so I don't know the entire history there. But I can tell you, based on the research I've done over the past few years, and able to look at who was getting the API position, what kind of training APIs we're getting, and then what kind of training our APs were getting, I realized that we had two pathways for APs. And a lot of our leaders of color, our men of color particularly, were not in the API role. They were in the AP role, which was really focused on buses, books, butts, and not so much instruction. But we are riding that wrong. And so you'll come to our AP meetings, they are instructional-focused so that everyone is getting instructional leadership development.
Okay, and then my second question was around, like, are we still doing the pools where like you have to get into the pool and then you're eligible to apply, like, for both principal and AP?
We are still doing a pool.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you know, Dr. Barnes-Jones, I'm glad to hear you actually say it, the BB, the BB word. You know, that a lot of minority assistant principals were always kind of relegated to the buses and the butts, and I'm glad, or the discipline. And I'm just glad that we're emphasizing the instructional leadership part. Because sometimes when I've talked in the past, talked to minorities, you know, how's it going? What is your progress? I think what I would hear is that the principal would leave me in charge of the school while he'd go to meetings. But something breaks down when I have my interviews. And I think the thing that breaks down is the instructional leadership. So I'm glad you guys are addressing that.
Well, nothing can be changed unless it's faced. And so we just have to name it, and then when you know better, you do better. And so we're doing better. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief Academic Officer, will discuss the 2025-2026 new course require, request.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent McManus. This year, we come before you to update you on the newest course request for 2025-26 school year. And the point of the course request is to look at capacity, also funding, resources available for expansion, course enrollments. We look at several factors. And so the courses that I'll present before you tonight are the ones that we looked at individual, both school basis and programmatic basis across the district to make a recommendation for new courses for approval for 2025-26. And so the first couple of courses are middle school-based for Mineral Springs Middle School for Guitar and Photography. Middle School has, Mineral Springs Middle has an arts-themed focus magnet, and this will give an opportunity to expand the options for elective courses for our students. And co-collaborating with our arts team, this was discussed as a high-interest opportunity for the students at Mineral Springs Middle School. For high school, Creative Writing Two was requested by Reynolds High School, but will also be available for other schools in the district for high school. Reynolds currently has high enrollment for Creative Writing One and continuing to expand additional offerings to offer beyond composition, an intermediate composition, an additional offering for students because of their arts focus as well. We also have for Career Center, the request, which was a joint collaboration between our CTE program and Science, to offer Fundamentals of Aviation, which is about advanced science and also advanced science and engineering. These two courses, one is a foundation and one is a continuation. So if we offer one to continue on with students in a pathway, we'd have to offer the other. And so it's being offered in science primarily because of the engineering-focused part of it. And then the last couple of courses are for World Languages and the Dual Language Immersion Program. So Intermediate American Sign Language. Sign Language is already, Wiley is a school for the deaf and hard of hearing. And so the initial Sign Language course has already been offered. And so to expand that, offering the Intermediate American Sign Language is the next step in the course progression. And then the last piece, the Spanish Literacy for Dual Language Programs. This is a recommendation from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Some of this is just a focus of Spanish literacy specifically, but also will help with enrollment of students in courses and getting that transferred into systems for data. Our system is one of the very few systems in North Carolina that does not offer this for our DLI programs. And so that will put us in alignment. And so this is a snapshot of the timeline for new courses. We launched it on October first, and they were due by October fifteenth for schools that wanted to propose a new course. We had our content. Folks in Instructional Services reviewed the course along with the Student Services Team and our Student Information Systems Team as well to look at capacity, prior enrollment. And one of the things we were very clear about is for a course that might have been recommended for one school, if it limited the capacity to offer that course district-wide, that could be one reason we did not recommend it to continue forward because it would eliminate the course being able to make for all students district-wide. So that was very important from an equitable standpoint. It's coming before you as a board today, and then we will have follow-up for schools if this is approved. And the registration meeting for the district is on December sixth. Are there any questions for me this evening?
Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
How many new courses that were submitted that we did not accept?
I can do the count, and I'm happy to email it. But roughly, there might have been about fifteen total. But some of those that were not submitted were either we already had the course or it would eliminate capacity other places, or we were still in a pilot. Very few were denied just because. I mean, there was a rationale around capacity usually, or if it was cost prohibitive for the district to expand the course. But I can give you the count.
I would just like to see some of the ones that, just, just a brief.
Sure, I will send an email to Lisa to get that over to you all.
Yes, Board Member Crowley.
Yeah, regarding the Spanish literacy K through five, what does that mean?
So.
Does it mean we're going to be teaching Spanish again in elementary schools?
No, for our dual-language immersion programs, it is progressively increasing for Spanish literacy and English. And so it's just for those specific programs only. It's only for our dual immersion programs.
Okay, so speeds and.
And Smith Farm.
Okay. Okay.
It's only for those specific DLI programs.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Thomas Krantz, our Chief Financial Officer, will lead us in the final discussion of the classified, excuse me, compensation plan.
Good evening. I'll be quick. This is the third time we've looked at this information. And here's what the administration of the school district is recommending. Number one, we believe that the study we've prepared meets the requirements that the commission asks us to do in creating a market study plan report. I know there's been some discussion between which districts we, as a district today, compared ourselves to versus with the 2020 report. And what was the difference for two schools? One was Charlotte Mecklenburg, which is very similar to Wake's numbers, so there wouldn't be a material difference there. And number two was Davidson, that we don't believe really represents as a market competitor to our district. We believe in looking at where we attract and where we personnel come from. Guilford is really our main competitor when we start talking about school systems versus the school system. Number two, because it meets that, we believe that we should request, if you're, that your superintendent and you as a board believe that we request the release of the $500,000 to the school system for the sole purpose of upgrading the salaries of our employees. You'll notice in the report that we pulled together, and by the way, I know there was a glitch in one of our versions of the draft where somehow the graphs got kind of commingled. We're looking at what caused it, but that was solely, if you looked at all the other reports, there was no glitch that took place. For some reason, that particular one, and I apologize for us having that occur. We believe that what we, that from talking to HR, one of our number-one concerns right now is hiring teacher assistants. Whether they're regular teacher assistants or ECs, we're referring to them as teacher assistants. And that's become a hard-to-staff position for our HR group. We believe, as you can see from the numbers, we calculated a weighted average approach of 1.69%. Please, as you're looking at the data, remember this. And while all classified employees and I have a special place in my heart for classified because I'm not a teacher, I'm not certain, my mom was, but I'm not. And I know what they do, having been the COO and the CFO of large districts combined in both jobs. And I appreciate the job they have to do each and every day. So I wish we could give them all the money in the world. Now I'm going to put my CFO hat on. Unfortunately, we can't do that. And I believe that what we came up with in allocating and breaking apart on the teacher assistants between a high, a mid, and a low, that we calculated a plan of $587,000, which is one we can afford to do. Now, again, I know there's more money and there's a lot of needs. And I'll be the first to say, I agree. I don't think public schools have ever been funded correctly since I've been alive and in business, not even close. And probably it's just going to get worse, unfortunately, by some of the things that you read in the newspapers today. But at the same time, it's got to be something we can sustain and one that we can maintain. And I wouldn't be doing my job to the superintendent and to y'all as a school board if I gave you any recommendation other than that. So I believe that what we put together, while it's not even close to being perfect, is really the best option that we've got if we want to pursue the use of the $500,000. The $87,000, because there's 587,000 is my calculation, I believe we can fund that through just managing our existing budget and our existing cash flow, that we can make that fit. Any questions?
Board Member Kate.
Well, I very much appreciate that we're going to use the $500,000, and we're looking at it to use this way. Do we have a timeline on when we are considering how to fund?
I'll have to coordinate with the superintendent to get a letter drafted like we do with, similar to how we do our bond proceeds and make that formal request to their county commissioners.
And on top of that, do we have a timeframe on for the rest of our classified employees? Like, obviously, we're having to tier it, and I understand the why behind that. But do we have a timeframe on when we think we can do the next step for everyone?
I will jump in here. I think what we need to do is if the board tonight approves the study as we have designed it, as Tommy and team have designed it, with the 2.4, the average of the market rate. as Tommy and team have designed it with the 2.4, the average of the market rate, then we know that's where we're going. We're going to need to, after the 500, we're going to need to, in our budget process, determine how we would do the rest of it. As far as this current school year, having another funding source to do the rest of it, that is, unless you were to say, let's do it all and use a one-time funding source, that would be, that would be it. But I do think as we look at the rest of it, which would have been two, eight, 1.8 or 1.9, the remainder.
If we're gonna go from the $500,000 to the 2.5, you're looking basically 1.9 to 2 million dollar difference.
So that is what we need to in the next budget, in our budget process that we're gonna start. Tommy's gonna go over the budget timeline in November. We need to prioritize that, which means we will need to stop something else and put that into the budget. But we, so again, we don't have the additional dollars right now unless we were to get any more from the county of more than 500. But right now, that's what they are giving, that's what they've, they're giving us, is 500, from what they've said.
Any other, yes, Board Member Crowley.
Yeah, so with that difference of 1.9 million, have there been discussions with the staff at the county about, you know, I get it that they've offered us 500, but the need is for 2.4. So has there been any negotiations for a compromise there?
I mean, they're aware of what our numbers are, but it's been a limited conversation, I'll just say that. So the answer to your question, no. But it's been limited by, I just think it's, everybody's in a tight situation. There's, we're gonna be coming back to y'all at the meeting on the 19th. And you're gonna see that the county's starting to have some dings in their revenue sources in our presentation, unless Ms. McManus wants to bring that up tonight. Article 46.
Oh, they know, yeah.
No, but I do, before Mr. Rohannon speaks, what I did want to say is that when we, what we can do now is look at the next groups. I think it's in the last three years, as we were making adjustments in pay, we started with some of the groups, like, we started with bus drivers, and that was a few years back. And then we went to different classified groups each year. And some of them were a little bit easier to tackle because they were a smaller number in that group. The TAs, there was a tiny, tiny increase made. I think it was my first year here, like, four years ago, because there's so many, there's about 800 of them. And so we did a very small increase. And so to start there is really a great thing to do. But then, we can look at what would be the next group that we, we can, what we can do is give you all a plan of, okay, this group will cost this much, this group will cost this much. I think it might be, it's in the report.
Yes, ma'am.
But we could, as Tommy, you know, as he's managing the budget throughout the year, if there's anything else we can do this year, we'll bring it to the board. But my comment was just about, we definitely have to put this into our budget for next school year. But Board Member Rohannon?
Well, and Board Member Crowley, to your question, I know you asked about staff conversations, but Deanna and I have recently had conversations with with the Chair and the Vice Chair of the County Commission, as well as the County Manager and Superintendent McManus. And Tommy's sort of conversations kind of match ours in that the county is currently sort of, they're assessing sort of their posture in terms of their limitations. And I think at this time, the $500,000 is sort of what they, what they said they could do is sort of what they are saying that they can do at this time.
Okay, I just want to make sure that our board is doing everything we can to advocate for our employees. Their job is to, obviously, distribute money in the way that they see fit. But our job as Board of Education members is to make sure that we have a staff to educate our constituents, our children of our county. And if we're having issues hiring, or we're having, you know, issues with retention, we need to do everything in our power to go for the 2.4 million and advocate for that. And if we fall a little short, that's fine. But I feel like this is an issue that's worth going to the mat for. And we need to be bold about that and make the ask. They can tell us no, but we can, we can at least present what is absolute, what is needed based on the study that was done.
I'm fine. I mean, like you said, the worst thing to tell me is no.
Right.
Yeah, our presentation at the county meeting was giving three different options. One, that would put us at the very top of classified in every category, pretty much above Wake, which is the highest-paid.
Yes, ma'am.
District. And then one would be competed, competitive with Durham. And then the rest was the market rate. And so at that time, we did not tell them because our board hadn't voted. We had just updated, given you all an update. So we haven't gone back and said, it's after tonight, the letter will say, our board has, if you approve this, our board has approved the market study that gives our employees the average of the five entities, and here's how much that would cost. So we can put it in the letter, that, the total, this is what it would all, it would cost. We can make that clear in what we send to them.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We have eight action items to consider tonight. First, consider approval of the new course approvals. Do I have a motion?
Move.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Coon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
I'm happy whenever they share.
Thank you, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next, consider approval of the Classified Compensation Plan, briefed at the October 22nd, 2024 Board Meeting and the November 12th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second. So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Miller. Any further discussion?
Yes, I want to make sure that the full amount is asked for.
Okay.
Or at least made known.
Okay, and it will be.
Sorry, point of clarification, which one, the ask or making it known?
I think, I think the one, the comparison with Wake is not a real comparison because there's a completely different tax base there. But I think the comparison with Durham is a very realistic comparison. And that's the one, because the Wake one, I believe, was over 4 million, right, for the difference? Was over 9 million? Yeah, that's not attainable. So I think we go with, I think we need to ask for the 2.4. And it, like, like I said, if they come back and say the best we can do is 500, then that's what we come home with. But we need to ask for what we need. And until we do that, I don't think people will understand what exactly is needed. So we need to ask for it.
So that will be in the letter.
So we can, if that, if, is that part of the motion so that everyone, is that? Yes, we will put in the letter, but is that part of the motion that, or no?
So, consider approval of the Classified Compensation Plan. Yeah, we would need to amend it to put that in the letter.
Motion to amend?
Well, we have a motion that's been on and seconded, so that one has to be.
Yeah, that one's gotta go first, okay.
Unless you want to remove, resend your motion so amended one can be made.
Who made the motion?
Yes, I can resend it.
Okay, all right.
So I'd like to offer a substitute motion that in the approval of this, we make it very clear in the letter that we are asking for all of the monies needed, not just the $500,000.
Well, in comparison to Durham County.
In comparison to Durham.
2.4 million, 2.4 million.
There you go.
Can I jump in, or is it out of order if I clarify that?
Go ahead.
Yes, please clarify. The 2.4 is the average of the five. The 2.4 is not Durham. Durham, beating Durham was 4. something. So just to make sure we're on the same page, to be at the market rate of the five entities, it is 2.4, the average market rate. So that's what we're asking for, not Durham, because Durham was.
Yeah, I'm, my substitute motion is for the two.
2.4.
2.4, yes.
Okay, so we have, that is a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Miller. Any further discussion?
I just, I'm trying to say this, and I'm trying to be intentional when I say this. So I understand completely about asking for what it is that we need. I would also say that the County Commission has, it's important for us that we maintain a positive relationship with an entity that we, that is essential for us to fund our schools. And what has been articulated, and I think that I would not be doing, I would be doing a disservice, I think, if I didn't say this. What has been articulated is that it would be appreciated if the board, if we, you know, were a little bit more balanced in our, our thoughts around what is possible for the commission to do and to not do because of their sort of limited funding sources. I think that what we have been told is that when they are put in positions to have to respond, like, everybody is saying, like, we need to ask and they can say no. Obviously, the reality is that nobody wants to be in a position to say no to a request that you know is necessary, but you don't necessarily have the funding to be able to provide, because that happens to us all the time. And so I feel like in our conversations, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that, at the end of the day, the entity that's responsible for the salaries of our employees is the state government. By statute, our County Commission is only responsible for the infrastructure. They have historically done above and beyond what their statutory obligation has been. And we will continue to ask for what it is that we need. However, I think at some point, we have to be, we have to be more intentional about making sure that we're acknowledging the work that they have done, and also that we're being more intentional with what we're allocated. So I think there's a lot of things that could happen at once. But based on some conversations that Board Member, that Chair Kaplan and I have had, I would be remiss if I didn't say that.
And I do appreciate you pointing that out because they do work very hard to work with us. I tell, I teach my kids all the time that nothing ventured, nothing gained. And if we don't ask, we don't get. And I don't think that there's harm in the ask. They say no to lots of things. We say no to lots of things. So I think it just has to be us being brave enough to say, this is what we want, and being okay with the answer being no.
To Vice Chair Rohannon's point, can we word the letter to say this is, instead of just, this is our, this is, this is what it would take to get us to this point? Maybe that could be a compromise of how to word it, that way they would know. I know that, yes, we had a conversation with them, and they said that what they are able to give us is the $500,000. And we do have to work with them. But what about if we worded it in that way? How would you all feel about that?
I think it's conceding a loss from the outset. I don't think, I mean, let's frame it this way. We also have to work with our teachers' assistants, and we have to work with the rest of our classified staff. I mean, we have, we have relationships with them as well. I don't know, is the county operating where their employees are making less than market value? I don't know. I'm asking that legitimately as a question. You know, but it makes it extremely hard for us to maintain an organization if we are consistently below market value for our employees. It makes it very difficult to hire and retain, all the things that we're talking about doing, and we're robbing Peter to pay Paul to make it happen. And I just think there needs to be an honest ask for what is needed. We're not asking to beat Raleigh, that is absurd. We're not asking to beat Charlotte, that would equally be as absurd. But to ask to be somewhere in the middle of five other districts and below Durham, of which we are larger than, I don't think, I think is absolutely reasonable. And honestly, as I already said, as a Board of Education member, it's our responsibility to ask for this.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. We've had discussion, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the grant easement for Fair Share Farm adjacent to Reagan High School. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, I have a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the contract with Red Rover Time and Attendance Software, briefed at the October 22nd, 2024 Board Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Consider approval of the, excuse me, the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Amendment and Transfer Number 13 and Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Amendment and Transfer Number 2, briefed at the October 22nd Finance Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Watts, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Fiscal Year 2025 Recruitment, Retention, and Performance Bonus Supplements, briefed at the October 22nd Finance Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
I move to table this motion.
Second. Any discussion?
So I would, I would recommend, well, I thought that we would, as opposed to tabling the whole thing, that we could keep the part of it that goes to social workers so that that could go forward. And then we could table the balance of it so that we could have some discussion because the amount that goes to social workers remains the same. Am I correct about that?
Yes, and that, and that, those are state funds. That can only be used for that, for what we allocated that for. So if we don't use that, the longer we wait, the, we might not get those funds.
Board Member Crowley, would you allow that?
Yes.
Okay.
I support that.
Okay, great. So we have a motion to table all of it except for what goes to the social workers. So we have a motion, and we have a.
And counselors. It's social workers and counselors.
And counselors, thank you. So, once again, do I have a motion for that?
Still moved.
You made the motion.
Second.
Board Member Crowley made the motion.
I did the second.
And the second. So we have the motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Miller. Any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Jefferson Middle School HVAC and Lighting Contracts, briefed at the November 14th, 2023 Buildings and Grounds Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. And lastly, consider approval of the RJ Reynolds High School Lighting Upgrade Contract, briefed at the November 14th, 2023 BNG Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. That concludes our action items. Next, we have our superintendent's update.
Yes, as we get started on this update, just, can I, I know all that was just done, and I'm trying to think of the right way to do this. So that the motion's tabled, is it, can I ask, is it the will of the board for us to bring back with a different funding source? I don't, I'm not sure what that means.
How?
Before we move on.
Yeah, or go ahead.
Um, I think that we need to see about the funding source because it, for me, I am concerned, while I know that we need the Tier 2 and Tier 3, I am concerned that we're taking something from employees that they all should get instead of breaking it up. So I would like to see us be able to fund it without taking from our other.
Okay. Vice Chair, but he had it?
So, just a couple of things. I personally would like to see, like, whatever is written in terms of, like, what the original purpose of the money is supposed to be for. I also would like to see what other districts use it for, particularly those of our size so that we can see sort of what they've been doing with it. I also would like to see, this is a lot, but I'd like to see the retention, like, our attrition data, like, so that we can sort of see. Because I know the conversation has been about kind of Tier 2, Tier 3 schools, but I'd like to see the numbers around the vacancies so that, you know, we have that. If that's, if that's the recommended usage, that there's some numbers to support that, that we can see.
I'd also like to see criteria around which schools are given which tier designation.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so really quickly, Kevin. All right, so really quickly, Kevin, if you would turn. So back to this. We, this is a little bit less events and, and celebrations than October, if you remember that slide. But I do wanna take a minute to recognize our Native American Heritage Month, that we are celebrating district-wide during the month of November. World Kindness and Substitute Educator are celebrated this month. And also, you saw this evening, we are celebrating our school psychologist, and also Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Month, which at our next meeting, we will be bringing a proclamation for that. All right? This, so See for Yourself is something that we started last week at Mount Tabor, and it is an opportunity for folks to, to community members, to, to come into our high schools, and we're starting with high schools to see what's going on. This is a longer list than you received, by the way, because after that day, I added to it. We're trying to get to as many high schools this year as we can, and then next year we'll go to middle schools. But I just, I wanted to highlight this. I know a couple of board members were able to come to this one, and it, you're invited to all of them.